We're ready, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to open the San Rafael City Council meeting of Monday, October nineteenth, twenty twenty. We met in closed session. I'll ask the city attorney if we had any reportable action.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, members of the community for president. No reportable action was taken in closed session this evening.
Thank you for reporting out. I'll ask the city clerk to call for the roll and any instructions for the public with regard to this evening's meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Bushy.
Present.
Vice Mayor Collin.
Present.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Here.
Councilmember McCullough.
Here.
Mayor Phillips.
Hi, everyone's present. Comments with regard to the public and instruction to them how to join us if they wish.
This meeting is being streamed live to YouTube where viewers can provide comments in the live chat or they're welcome to attend by telephone by calling six six nine nine zero zero nine one two eight and the meeting ID is eight five zero six four zero zero three zero four two pound. If you're participating over the telephone and you wish to provide public comments, please press star nine when the mayor opens the public comment period. When it's your time to speak, you will hear a notification that the host is inviting you to speak, at which time you'll need to press star six to unmute yourself. Once you hear that notification that you've been unmuted, you will have two minutes to speak. If you're submitting your comments on YouTube to be read aloud into the record, please write public comments in caps prior to your message and introduce yourself. And submit your comments and please note that there is a two hundred character limit on YouTube, so please submit your comments in groups. Additionally, if you're planning to speak to the city council on matters not on this evening's agenda, please submit your comments in the YouTube live chat now so we can get that ready to be read in just a moment here. And if you've submitted comments prior to the meeting by email or letter, it was forwarded to the city council and published with the agenda to our website. Additionally, we have started providing closed captioning for this meeting, so we'll go ahead and add that to the chat. A link to the chat, you'll be able to access it from there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Let's have the city managers' report. Jim, you're on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I have a couple updates and announcements, and then I'd like to turn it over to Chief of Police Diana Bishop to provide you with an update on the Father Henniper Sarah statue incident at Mission Sarafell last week.
Thank you.
Before I do so, though, I want to just cover a couple things. First, the city clerk asked me to announce that we're seeking applications for vacant positions on the Park and Recreation Commission and also the Board of Library Trustees. The Park and Recreation Commission reviews and advises on general policies and procedures in the delivery of park, recreation, childcare and cultural services. And the Board of Library Trustees provides support to library staff on a range of topics important to current library operations, the goal of a new library, and also helps increase visibility of the library in the community. So anyone interested can apply online at citiesarafell.org/boards-commissions. And I believe the city clerk is going to be placing that link in the chat right now as well, so you have that. It's citiesarafell.org/boards-commissions. So my second update is on our ongoing coronavirus response. We remained as expected in tier two or red status last week for the fifth straight week. Our numbers actually are continuing to trend slightly better. The Department, California Department of Public Health, as you know, is now on its weekly cycle where it assesses indicators on Mondays and releases new tier assignments on Tuesdays. So we'll hear tomorrow kind of where we're at. For Marin, the adjusted case rate per a hundred thousand residents is still our main factor keeping us in tier two. There is the council and I think probably everyone California now knows there's this four-tier system and we've been in tier two or the red tier. In order to move into orange or tier three, we have to meet the indicators both for adjusted case rate, overall test positivity, and then the equity metric. We talked about it the last city council meeting briefly. So we're there on the latter two. We're still not there yet on adjusted case rate. We're awfully close. Actually, the most recent number we have, and again, this will be updated tomorrow, but is four point oh, and the range for orange or tier three is from a one to a three point nine. So we're actually quite close. And we're closer now to moving into the next tier, tier three, than we are to falling backwards to tier one, the purple tier. In order to achieve tier three, two things need to happen. First of all, we have to make that adjusted case rate and get our number below three point nine. And then we also have to be in the range for two weeks before we can move into the new tier. So if our data continues to improve, for example, like if we get there as of tomorrow's new data release, we need to be in it for two weeks and we could theoretically move to tier three or the moderate tier, which would allow quite a bit more openings and capacity increases at places of business that is early as October twenty seventh. If the number doesn't improve, then we stay in red for a longer period of time. So that's what's going on with our tiers. I did want to highlight again the work of the Canal Policy Working Group that includes Vice Mayor Collin and city staff Christine Lulovich and Catherine Kufa. It grew out of the Canal Outbreak Response, which actually is also trending much more positively these days. And that the Policy Working Group recognized the disproportionate impacts that the COVID nineteen pandemic is having on communities of color, particularly in higher concentration of essential workers. So the group continues to meet weekly and make progress on addressing the critical issues identified by the community. Coming to you soon, this is a coming attraction. Over the past week, staff and our community partners started working on a resolution that's planned for both the San Rafael City Council and the Marin County Board of Supervisors, likely at your, one of your November meetings, as soon as actually your, as soon as your next meeting, for a draft resolution that expresses leadership support for finding collaborative solutions on policy issues like the ones that we have been talking about around housing and also business and health. So as far as funding for such an effort, when we're talking about new policies or initiatives, I think the San Rafael community is aware by now how bad the city's budget deficit is. We had a nine million dollar budget deficit in the current fiscal year, and the council approved millions of dollars of budget reductions that impacted every city department. There was approximately four million in additional reductions that we deferred until the results of measure R are known. So we'll know soon how much deeper we need to further reduce services. And as I mentioned at the last city council meeting, the worst-case scenario is that everything goes back on the table and we need to be looking at having a lower level of emergency response, decreasing hours at community centers and libraries, further reducing our maintenance of streets and sidewalks and parks, and looking at reductions really in every city department. So while our budget condition is weak, and we've been talking about that for most of this year, we need to find other funding sources to support any new policies or initiatives that are developed in the coming weeks and months to support our most vulnerable community members, stay healthy and keep their housing and businesses during the pandemic. So for that, we're looking at our partners at the County of Marin and other cities and towns and other funding sources. For example, state and federal funds, and there is a highly restrictive funding source of the Community Development Block Grant, which can't be used for normal city services like filling potholes or maintaining parks or emergency response times, but can be used for this sort of thing of providing rental assistance or business support to impacted residents and businesses, particularly those that are lower income and significantly impacted through the COVID nineteen. So those are the sorts of things that we're looking at. So we are not interested in having a resolution that just sits on the shelf. We're looking at actually implementing policies and initiatives and also trying to identify funds really largely outside of the city budget because of the condition of the city budget in order to fund those things. So all of that is just intended as a brief update. We will be back at your coming meetings on all of these topics. Depending on the results of measure R, we may need to return with much more significant budget reductions. We'll also bring back a recommendation of how to use those Community Development Block Grant funds that I mentioned. The resolution that I mentioned, the support of the policy initiatives in the Canal neighborhood, and other resolutions and ordinances on high priority issues that the council has been working on, such as the development of additional affordable housing. So we do have some longer meetings, I think, in November to look forward to with all of that coming forward to you. But those are some really important things as it relates to what's going on in San Rafael. I wanted with the remainder of my time, just turn it over to Chief of Police Bishop for her update. Chief.
Thank you, Jim, Mr. Mayor and members of the council and our community members in San Rafael. I wanted to talk about something that I think has been at the forefront of a lot of people's minds since last Monday at this time. And what that was, was the toppling of the Father Sarah statue on the property of St. Rayfield's Church. We had learned of a movement and a group that was going to come to our city and their goal was to deface and tear down the statue. It is private property, so we called the property owner, who is the Archdiocese of San Francisco, and talked to their head of security and asked him how we could work with them to figure out what was going to happen at this event. They asked for a soft approach and they asked for us not to, how historically police departments have done where you stand in front of a, an object or a group of people or a building to protect it from something. They did not want us to do that. They did want anyone who defaced or damaged the property to be held to account to the fullest extent of the law, and that's certainly what we wanted as well. So we came up with a plan with their wishes in mind and then with community safety in mind. And we're at, across the street from the church at the appointed time, which was five P M. We recognized several folks who we felt were leaders of the group. There were some people there to just voice their displeasure at, at wrongs they felt had been done on people over the years. And then there's some who were there for destruction of the property. So we contacted them. We told them we were there to let everyone have their free speech right and make sure no one was injured, but that if anyone did violate the law, then they would be arrested and sent, the information sent to the district attorney's office for prosecution. The first thing that happened was that a small group put red paint on the statue and then a group of probably five to seven folks had some nylon straps and pulled the statue down. We specifically, based on our conversation with the Archdiocese and not wanting to wade into a crowd of forty or fifty people to protect property, although I should have said this at the beginning, and this is really important, is that I understand and my officers in my department understands that that, that statue and that mission and that, and that church, St. Rayfield, are not just property. They are part of the, who this, and what this city is, and they're, they're very symbolic and I get that. And please know that it was not easy for anyone involved there to see that happen, but there was, there was a plan. So that happened and there's probably forty to fifty people, as I said, and the goal was to have the folks who were the violators disperse, which they did. They, they ran or walked away quickly in different directions. And my officers were in that area and each of those people individually away from the, the large crowd were detained. And if it wasn't for COVID, they would have been arrested and taken to the Marin County Jail, but there were issued citations for felony vandalism. They were ID'd properly. All of this was videotaped on our body worn cameras, so we have great physical evidence for the district attorney's office. People are, so five people were cited at the scene and then another person subsequently was ID'd and also is going to be charged with felony vandalism and actually a hate crime, because if you do some type of vandalism against a church or synagogue or religious institution, that is another charge that there could be. So our goal was allowing a peaceful protest, First Amendment right of free speech to the, to the majority of folks who were there for that, to not have a use of force against people who were committing a property crime against the property of an entity that did not want us to use that force, and also to hold account, to account the people responsible. So all three of those things were done. Some people are very upset with us and I totally understand that. It's an emotional issue. I, I get it. I wouldn't change the plan that we had. It's, it's not last year, it's not the year before, how police officers see something and they just run into it and, and take care of it. We, that's how we are programmed. That's what we want to do. We have to be more thoughtful when, when a property crime is occurring and a person is not being injured, and that's what the plan was, and it, it worked out how it did. I just wanted to give some context to this group and anyone else who is, is listening and just give you an update as to that I'm proud of the plan that was put in place. I think it's actually very cutting edge and hopefully we'll have to use it again, but I'm, I'm proud of my people.
First of all, Chief, thank you so much for reporting out. I thought I suggested to Jim that you do so, and I'm pleased that you have, because I do want the community to fully understand the circumstances surrounding the incident, so it's clear as to what action was taken by the department. And in my view, I expect the vast majority. You handled it, you and the department handled it extremely well. I, first note that I received was there were officers standing nearby and the statue was torn down and it was like, what's that all about? And so called for a meeting with the chief and the city manager and city attorney to, to better understand the circumstances. So I came back or came out of that meeting feeling comfortable that what was done was, was appropriate. And I did want the community to fully understand that you would take the, the steps to reach out to the Archdiocese for direction prior to the event. First of all, you were aware of it. I thought that was, that was quite good. And then the steps taken after the chief, and I know that at the, at the time before any action was taken on site, the individuals demonstrating, as you mentioned, peaceful protest is, is fine, but damage is not, property damage is not. And they were so warned by one of our sergeants that that would be the outcome. And you did, I think, the appropriate follow-up, which is to take names, so to speak, and and it is now being reported or has been reported to the district attorney for appropriate action. I'll be pretty insistent that there be some, because property damage in San Rafael simply is not permitted. And I think under the circumstances, good judgment was taken. If you look at the results, we have no injuries, some property damage, but we will also hold, I presume, I hope at this point, out of our hands, those that perpetrated the, 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 the damage by tearing down the tearing down the statute will be held accountable. So for my two bits, I think that the department handled itself extremely well. Received a number of email comments. I hope that your report, I think it should. Will address the concerns of many within our community and understand that what was done was well thought out, well positioned and executed. And my my compliments to you and the department on behalf of those within the community that fully understand what took place. So thank you for your adding that this evening. I was going to write something, but I think it's far more effective coming directly from you. So thank you.
Thank you, and I'll pass on your thanks to my people as well.
Please do, the most deserving, please do. And with that, Jim, anything further into your report?
I have nothing further, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. In which case, why don't we go to open time for public expression and opportunity for the community to address us on matters that aren't on this evening's agenda, but you want to bring to our attention and we're always receptive to your thoughts, recommendations and general comments. So Lindsay, anyone from the public?
If you are participating by telephone and you wish to speak, please press star nine now. And when it's your turn to speak, you will be notified that the host is asking you to participate. And you will need to press star six to unmute yourself. If you're participating on YouTube, please start submitting your comments now and note that when doing so, you need to write public comment in advance of your comments. I do see a hand raised. Get my timer ready.
Good evening. I'm Victoria DeWitt. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. I hope you've had a chance to read my comments included in your packet under open time for public expression. I'm worried about the city planning staff. Did not follow the departmental procedures for geotechnical review. And other hillside guidelines for thirty-eight Upper Fremont. I have detailed the specific issues in my letter to staff dated September twenty-second, which is included in your packet. Staff responded on September thirtieth and I followed with another letter on October seventh. I took the time to carefully craft this letter and I have not yet received a response. So I'm here tonight to ask for your help. I would like to know when I can expect to receive a response to my letter of October seventh. This letter has some specific requests, two of them I will comment on. Residents would like to see the story poles installed. This project was reviewed by the New Design Review Advisory Committee or Advisory Committee, DRAC, and no story poles were installed. It seems unfair to deny residents this visual information, given the long established practice for hillside development. We would like to participate in the construction management plan, as has been the past practice for development on this hill. This site has very difficult access and the construction will be very disruptive to the daily lives of residents living along the designated route. I think it is important to involve the residents in this plan to create the cooperation and coordination necessary to successfully accommodate this construction project. Again, I'm asking for assistance in getting a response to my letter dated October seventh. Thank you.
Thank you, Victoria. I know that City Manager has received your letter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments?
I have no, there are no other comments from the public. From, sorry, over the telephone. Let me just double check on one too. Am I seeing them? That concludes public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Was, are there, is there another public comment?
No more. That concludes.
All right. Thank you. We'll close public and turn to the consent calendar for this evening. Anyone from the public wish to address us on the consent items? Of which there are five, five items? Anyone?
Once again, we actually have no callers at the moment and if you are participating on YouTube, please go ahead and submit your comments now. I'm going to give about fifteen seconds to for the members of the public to submit some comments.
Thank you very much. In which case, let's turn to council for
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry. I meant that I'm going to give fifteen seconds to allow them to
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, sure.
We have some time for them.
Okay.
I see no public comments.
Okay, thank you. And we'll close and go to the council for any items to be withheld by anyone. I see none. Therefore, a motion would be appropriate with regard to the consent items.
I move that we adopt the consent calendar.
And second.
And second. Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin.
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCollum.
Aye.
Your boss.
I am a matter carries five zero. We'll turn to special presentation, presentation by PG&E regarding temporary generation substation update. Mark, are you with us? Or Jim, do you wish to introduce?
I just, I'll
I am. Can you hear me all right?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
All right. It may take a second for my video to kick in. I think it just did.
You're on board. Thank you.
Mayor Phillips and council members and manager Shuts, I thank you. It's good to see you virtually. It's been, it has been some time in quite a year. So I thank you for inviting me here to be with you tonight. I've been asked to keep it relatively brief with some question and answer time afterwards, so I will try and do things fairly quickly.
Thank you.
Happy to come back to any, anything that I'm going to show you in just a minute when I share my screen. I'd also like to just check briefly, my associate Marin resident and manager Darren Klein is here with me tonight. I suppose, Darren, are you, hopefully you're connected, I'm hoping. I don't see you, but I don't know.
Yep.
I'm not getting any audio for some reason.
No, I thought I'd clicked it, but apparently I hadn't. But I did want to wish welcome to Darren. Thank you for joining us this evening and being part of the presentation.
Thank you. Terrific. So I'm going to share my screen. If I could, Mayor, if you could just tell me just to confirm that you should be seeing here soon a Google Earth of you.
Yes, we do. Thank you.
Wonderful, wonderful. Tonight, I was asked specifically to speak about temporary generation. I believe most of you are familiar with our Community Wildfire Safety Program. We've been talking about for a couple of years. More recently and especially last year, we talked about a public safety power shut off. And Marin certainly experienced that and to a great number of people. And our goal is to make sure we reduce that by thirty percent or more. One of the ways that we plan to do that is through the use of temporary generation. The only time we would need to use or look towards temporary generation, so think of a home generator, a small generator that you would you know, put outside your home, always outside to make sure you don't have any carbon monoxide issues, but so you have outside a generator and then there's electrical cords that can run in and power things in the home. Well, we have larger generators that can power portions of areas, segments of circuits. And so we'll get into that. But the key thing is, we would only need to use generators and bring generators in to help power parts of San Rafael if we lose power to the transmission line that comes to the substation. So that's what I'm going to point to in just a second here on the Google Earth map. Power flows to Marin County almost exclusively through our Ignacio Substation, which is just a bit south and east of Nevada here, right at the Highway thirty-seven and one oh one interchange. And for the most part, it comes down and follows the one oh one corridor into San Rafael. Much, very, very differently than our transmission lines that go up through these of what the California Public Utilities Commission is designated Tier Three and Tier Two. Critical or very elevated high fire threat areas. These are transmission lines that we would expect, I would expect would be something we'd be much more concerned about in a high wind, high heat, low humidity, very dry fuels event. So I just wanted to point out, there really isn't much of the transmission line that serves San Rafael. Little bit here, Peacock Gap area, but primarily the other main line comes down along the one oh one quarter. So let's take a quick zoom in here. Where is the San Rafael Substation, some may ask? It is right here along Second Street. I just brought this up. This is the Lofts Apartments. I hope you can see that. This is the substation. Right across the street actually is our former circus tent, now remediated PG&E property that I believe is owned by Bio Marin. But again, we're looking at this area right here and for context, got Lindaro Street here. Second Street Anderson and right tucked in here is the PG Substation. Key point to make is not a lot of space. So as that transmission line comes into the substation here. It then feeds both by underground circuits and overhead circuits. The electricity to San Rafael, San Anselmo, parts of Ross and other areas. The orange lines that you see here are overhead. They represent overhead electric circuits. The green lines represent underground. Our goal is to prevent electricity from running up into these high fire threat areas that surround both this Tier Three, very critical area here to the south and a bit to the west. And then up here, we have more, it's the elevated, but still a concern to us. These are not designated by local fire districts, the county fire department or your fire department. This is the California Public Utilities Commission. Designation maps of high fire threat areas. So in the event, the unlikely event, I think, of a transmission line level interruption. We would mobilize from the East Bay, Benicia-Valejo area where we have stored a number of larger generators and deploy them to this substation area. And the intent would be to power a good portion of the safe to energize areas. Not all of these areas can be energized because we have some space constraints. But I can probably stop there, really. I think it would probably be a good idea to have some questions and answers. I know that you have some, but effectively that's the idea is that we would put generators into the substation location here and stage them. They would connect and provide power. They would be biodiesel fueled. And again, they would primarily provide the power in here that comes usually from the transmission lines. So let me pause there. I know it's a lot to digest.
Okay, anyone, I can't see all the council members, quite frankly, but any questions?
Andrew, you have a question? Yeah, I do. Yeah, Mark, if you could explain if there's an interruption with the transmission line, either the one coming down the one oh one corridor or the one coming over China Camp. Could that, could a PSPS event qualify as such an interruption thereby triggering the use of this generated power?
Yes, absolutely. The generation is intended for, and I don't want to say exclusively, but but specifically it was intended for a public safety power shut off event where we have high winds. We have you know, twenty-five, thirty mile an hour sustained winds and we get gusts of forty-five or greater. Typically over the peaks. That's where we usually find those high wind events and that's why I was pointing out the one oh one quarter. To your point. There are other events that can interrupt power. So if it isn't a public safety power shut off event, a weather event that we typically would see four to five days in advance, meteorology is watching the weather as it moves and we're doing that in fact right the second. We would begin rolling the generators to that site. There are circumstances, last year was one to point out. The Kincade Fire, or CAL FIRE, if there's a fire ongoing in an area, we may get very little notice in advance. To shut the transmission power off. Which would not allow us the time needed to deploy and set up the generators at that substation. Does that answer the question, Councilmember?
It does. And Mark, can you just, can you also show us the areas that will be served by the generated power? In the event of a PSPS or other transmission line interruption?
That, I, so areas that could be served are these areas that are not in the high fire threat districts. I don't know what, for what reason the the critical areas are. I guess it's reloading here. So forgive me, the lower tiered areas are only showing, I'm not sure why isn't it showing the critical areas? Because I know we have some that are red here that we just looked at a second ago. So I apologize for that. Maybe they'll load in just a second. But depending on the number of generators that we would establish here at the substation, it might be able to power you know, downtown, some areas in this location. It could power, I know we've heard some concerns about powering areas in the canal. Some of the canal areas. So I think we would want to have a discussion about what would get, what would be provided power. I don't know, Darren, if you want to add more to that?
Mark, can you hear me?
I can hear you, yeah.
So this substation powers thirty thousand accounts, which is roughly eighty to ninety thousand people. So when you look at the footprint of what we could generate, we would focus on critical facilities and things along Fourth Street, Third, Second, as they come together, the business corridors. We would do our best to power as much as we can. We can't tell you exactly how much we could power because it does depend on what local resources are brought on. So for example, we would assume that the San Quentin Prison and the hospitals would turn on their generators at that point. That would reduce the load that would be required to generate at the substation. And therefore we could generate more homes. What we would do is look at those circuits that have critical facilities on them. Sometimes you've heard to us refer to them as in rotating outages as block fifty circuits. We would be lighting those up first based on how many generators that we could fit in that area. It could take a lot of generators because this is a large substation. Like I said, it doesn't look large, but it is large. But we see the PSPS events lasting a twenty-four hour period, not like it was last year. Every event we've had this year has actually seen a sixty percent reduction, a huge reduction in the transmission impacts. So we believe that as we stage generation here and kind of build it up that we would be able to generate places that need to be generated and then the event would pass by and we'd be able to get on to next events.
Excuse me, Councilmember Gamblin.
Yeah, hi. Thanks, thanks, guys. So you mentioned that the generators are currently stationed over in Benicia-Valejo area. Is that just because we don't have the free space to just keep them stored here? My question leads to if there's an event, how long does it take to move them from Benicia to Vallejo over to San Rafael? Get them hooked up and get them generated? Is this a matter of hours or a matter of days or?
Well, it's a matter of hours. One to four hours is what it would take. It would probably be sooner than four hours. We staged them in Benicia and Vallejo for several reasons. One is, like you said, space constraints. And then the other is security. It's easier to watch them all in one place than in many places. So we have teams that are deployed and are at that warehouse on a regular basis because they also run generators to when we have unplanned outages. Such as the fires that are experienced up in Napa. We have people that run generators up there that are supplying energy to certain circuits to help support that fire. It's an ongoing operation that we have. It is hooked into that type of operation. So we have those resources.
Okay. And then the other thing is, is that you mentioned the San Rafael Substation. And this is just for my identification and maybe others, the substation off of Smith Ranch Road, Los Kalinas area, what is, what's? The, the substation off of Smith Ranch Road, Los Galinas area, what is, what's that? I see that on the 101 piece. Is that just another? Yeah, that one that says Los Galinas.
That's another substation. That is, does not power as much as the San Rafael substation. It probably powers half. And when you look at the population, it's a little bit less. When, when, when we say it powers 30,000 accounts, that usually equates to two people per account or roughly 60,000 in San Rafael. But because San Rafael is so urbanized, it's actually really seven to 80,000. This substation here is probably, if I remember, the peak load is somewhere around 12 megawatts. So you are powering a population that is not just in San Rafael, it's outside of the, it's outside of San Rafael as well, of around 20,000 people, if I remember correctly, about 20 to 30.
So in that, in that situation, this would not be a candidate for generators as well or is that able to be hooked up?
That is a candidate for generators. Every, every substation in Marin County is a candidate for, for us being able to roll up generators and start supplying generation. The Green Bray Substation, which is the one I live off of, yes, you know, not only have elected officials ask me, but my wife has asked me, can I get to the Green Bray Substation? Yes. The only location that we have that has permanent generation is the, is down to serve Marin City and Salso Lido. And we did that because there is space there for that and we saw that they might encounter some more PSPSs or they're more susceptible to PSPSs than the rest of the county. So we found that it was better to stage generation there and then leave flexibility for us to be able to go to the Galena Substation or the San Rafael Substation. The one interesting thing about Marin is, as Mark said, when your transmission line goes all the way down 101, who are harder to generate substations are further away. So the furthest one away has permanent generation at it. And then as you move up the chain, you see that, you know, you would need either less generation or it's less susceptible to being shut down. Our biggest concern really in all of this is San Rafael because it's in a heavy urban area where you can't fit a lot of generators on the side of the road or in the actual substations. So that's why we wanted to make sure that everybody understood. We probably couldn't generate all of the footprint of San Rafael, San Anselmo and Ross that's covered by this. So we would generate those most important circuits first and try to get people on based on balancing the load. But as Mark is showing here, down here, there's so much tier two and tier three that comes up here. We wanted to make sure that we knew we could get the, where some of these transmission lines go through the tier two, tier three areas. So we decided to go ahead and just island generation in these spaces, right? So that's why you have the permanent generation there. With San Rafael having a clear path up the transmission line that we don't have to have as many generators, sometimes we could actually generate one of the, you have double transmission lines that come in. We might be able to generate one transmission line and not the other. So we have a much better chance of getting power to the San Rafael substation. And why we always say there's really a low chance in a PSPS event now, which we know last year it did get affected. But the reason it really got affected was the Kincaid Fire and its impact on the transmission lines and trying to balance load across those transmission lines. That is, you know, I know wildfires are happening a lot more often nowadays, but you know, the chances of something like that happening again are pretty low. So we are trying to balance the resources we have as we try to keep all of our customers energized during this. And we found that San Rafael is, you know, we're going to be able to get some generators in there, keep things going and reduce the impact of these events.
Mayor?
Yeah, so I was just looking to see, yes.
Yeah, thank you. So thank you, Mark and Darren for coming. I know this is something that is on everyone's mind. And my question is for people that aren't watching tonight or if they want to know next week, where's the best way for them to get information? I mean, Mark, you've been really great about keeping all of us in the loop so people can always email us. But where would you recommend people reach out to if they want to know if they might be susceptible PSPS or just if they can get a sense of what might be happening?
Absolutely. Well, I'm counting on you, all of you, to share that information out. So I say that not, not just in jest, but I will send again links to the city manager and the clerk. There are a few, what I would say core links. I kept a couple of them up here for two reasons. One, you probably saw today that we are expecting another public safety power shut off wind event. I usually focus in on the wind because it is the wind that is, that is D-trigger for us. And so I live in Napa. I love visiting Marin and thank you for the beaches, by the way. Our family has enjoyed them many times this summer, more than ever. So thanks for that. It's been our only getaway from the smoke and the, and the trouble that we've had. But this public safety power shut off, and again, I'll send this link. We have this PG Alerts up here and this is a great site to go take a look at current outages. Somebody says, oh, my power just went out. What's going on? There's a current outages. You can type in your address. There's future public safety power shut off outage locations, which are especially helpful. When we do notify now, you'll see that Marin has no planned outages here. And back to Councilmember Gamble's question about the generation, I think especially for the Bay Area, this location is ideal to very quickly mobilize those generators. So I just wanted to come back to that quickly. But Councilmember Collin, the, the links I will reshare with the manager Shuts, with all of you. There are four or five that I think are tremendously helpful, including our medical baseline, our zip code lookup. Some folks do live in areas that are what we call master meter. So the account holder may be singular, but feeding five, 10 to 200 folks. And so you may want to get a medical baseline or a zip code alert. And then you would check with your property manager if you get a notification and say, hey, I got this notification. You get the, the details in an email or a text or a message. Tell me more about what you're expecting at our property. So those are some ways that I can share information. Is that helpful?
It is. Thank you.
Absolutely, yeah. I have just two questions, one on point and one perhaps on the edge. You've mentioned a couple of times the coverage and my question relates to those areas that are not covered in such an event you're referring to. You've talked about households and 60,000, that's about total population. So I'm not sure if there's complete coverage or only, only partial coverage. So maybe you could help me better understand that point?
Yes, it is, it is only partial coverage of the population of San Rafael when I refer to those numbers. The San Rafael substation actually serves San Anselmo, Fairfax, Ross, and the back end of the Kentfield-Green Bray area. So when we talk about 30,000 customers and how the power flows, it does not follow the political jurisdictions of the city. What you can see here as Mark has, as we, Mark got the red to work, the areas of generation is really the downtown area of San Rafael and then going out towards the canal. The canal is one of the places we do try to keep power on to as, as much as possible. And so we're, we're, we believe we have enough to keep the supermarkets lit from the Safeway in San Anselmo all the way down forth through downtown to the Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, and then up and around the canal. We, the, the generation that is required to do that would be four to six of our generators, which is something that we can pretty easily fit around the substation. And then we would be adding generators to that to see what else we could do to balance load. And then depending on what load gets picked up through the Green Bray substation and that's where we start talking about San Quentin and hospitals and, you know, you have Kaiser right in the middle of downtown. But trying to keep medical facilities and all of those things lit. And that's one of the reasons why it's very hard for us to say to you, what is the exact footprint of what we could energize? Because we do focus on the critical facilities first. And then depending on how much electricity people are using at any given time, then we're able to add neighborhoods back as well based on those generators. But until we're able to balance the load, have the conversations that people are conserving energy, because we would call San Quentin prison and say, how can you conserve energy during this? Balancing that load when you don't have transmission coming in becomes a lot more difficult. And it's the reason why we have the system we have. When you have transmission lines and distributions, it's a lot easier to balance your load. When you have to generate from a substation, it gets a little harder to balance the load.
Yeah, I think many people would understand that also. They might have a question, however, if, if they're assuming incorrectly, they're assuming every generation would provide for power in the case of an overall outage in their particular area and, and in fact, they're not in an area that would be covered. And so they might be able to take other, other preparations, mentioned that, you know, home generators, et cetera.
Absolutely.
It would be helpful to know if you're in an area that would be covered, more than likely, not absolutely, but more than likely. And also if you were in an area, you haven't mentioned much about Terre-Linda and Kaiser, et cetera, et cetera. But if you're in an area that is not going to be covered, the community members might wish to make plans in that event. So.
Yeah, and, and I would like to add on that is that, like I said, the further north you are, the greater chance you have of, of not being affected by the PSPS because of how power flows down the transmission line. The Terre-Linda area and that, you have a much reduced percentage as long as you are not in the orange area that you see on the corners of this map. These are areas where you're more likely to stay on, more likely to be able to generate in a transmission level outage. And, you know, knowing that Kaiser is going to be, the hospital at Terre-Linda is going to be energized first and things on those circuit. If you're on a block 50 circuit, you have a much greater chance of being lit during these PSPS.
But see, as a practical matter, I would suggest most, if not all, in our community have no clue if they're in this plot 50 or how they determine the likelihood is. I mean, you've made reference to likelihood, that's probability. How does, how does a community member know what that likelihood is? They're not going to know. And how can you help them better understand their circumstance?
You can better understand your circumstance by looking at your bill. It will say what block you're in when you're in a rotating outage actually on your bill. And where it says block 50, that means that you are on a circuit that has critical facilities.
And so. The average person is not going to know 50 from Adam.
No, it's written on your bill, sir. It's written on your bill. If I had a bill, I would show you where it's written on the bill. I, unfortunately I don't. But you're the, when it comes to what I'm referring to, block 50, it is actually written on your bill that you get every month.
See, I don't doubt that. But if I, if I asked 100 people, I bet, I'll bet, I'll bet no one would know that that was a critical event, a critical information with regard to outage on their bill.
That's why we're doing presentations like this so that everyone can hear that information and we're repeating it over and over. We encourage everybody to go to pgne.com to get this information. And, you know, if there is a chance of a PSPS outage in their neighborhood, you know, if they would like to look at generators and, and those kinds of things, I would suggest that they do that.
Okay, and I would encourage you to, to make that as evident as possible because this is not intuitive to many in our community, perhaps including myself. Second thing, if I could, I happen to sit on the wildfire prevention authority and this is a little off the regeneration, but I'm, I'm always curious. PG&E, of course, has had some issues with regard to wildfires that concern many of us in our communities. And so I'm assuming, correct me if I'm wrong, that you'll be working closely with the wildfire prevention well, under the act, be working closely with us to help coordinate if and event of a fire, hopefully to prevent a fire. PG&E is going to be there hand in hand with us.
Yes, we are. We also share resources with all of the firefighters throughout Marin County. There are fire cameras that we have and we, we have cameras that we own and CAL FIRE and others own throughout the whole area. We share all of that information and we all work together so that even if we think that there might be a fire starting, we have a 24 hour wildfire safety operations center that works with all of the fire departments. And if we see a puff of smoke from one of our cameras or heat from an infrared camera, we work with all the fire departments to respond to that.
Okay, good. That's important and we appreciate it certainly. Any, let me, let me take a quick survey here. Councilmember Bushy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just have a couple of questions on two seemingly unrelated topics. The first is fuel. Can you tell us where you're going to store all the fuel for these four to six generators? And what will be your, your storage protocols? Not to, you know, indicate history, but there has been some history on the site. The second topic, it has to do with noise. Four to six generators, diesel generators could be very noisy. We have some large residential developments in our downtown. I'm concerned about the amount of noise that you anticipate coming from these generators because I presume at least some of them will be running all night. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
So when it comes to your, to your question, just to make sure I got this, your questions are noise and fuel. So first, when it comes to fuel, for two, every two generators, there is a fuel tank that is used. Those fuel tanks are stored in Vallejo with the, the equipment. Those are trucked to the site with everything. And then that fuel tank is what we then have people come in and refuel. So it's not like we're storing 50 tanks that would be used over a week. We, we have one tank to fuel two generators and then we would have refueling operations come in and refuel those. So you wouldn't be storing fuel on site outside of the actual fuel tank. When it comes to the decibels that are a part of this, 95 decibels is the, is what we try to keep all of this under. And that's where our generators fall. There is a noise issue. We have found that generators that are kept at this decibel level where people are living nearby, some, that they are not affected at the decibel level of these generators. If you were to bring in 20, 30 generators, yes, that decibel level would go out, would, would be an issue. And if we had to bring in that large number of generators, we would have a discussion with the town as to where we might need to place those generators to handle the, the noise level. Mark had spec sheets for all of the generators that would be used on this site and as well as spec sheets for every substation that would be used so that you can see that we have been looking at all of those issues and we can send those out to you. But we do think about the decibel levels. We do think about the fuel loads and those kinds of things. That's why we're using biodiesel fuel in these. And I would say in future events, we will be looking at cleaner fuel alternatives so that we can do GHG reduction even when it comes to those. These generators are considered a short-term solution. They are not here to be there forever. They're there to help us get through an event and we're able to move them away from this site so that San Rafael can go back to normal operations when we don't have the wildfire threat.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think that's actually a good question. I was trying to recall a SMART. I think SMART decibel level is, could be wrong in this, but 103 or 4. So 96 is pretty high. I know cars on the track at Sonoma Raceway can't exceed 90, about 95. So that's, that's loud.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying. No, that's, that's three or four together. Ours come in around 70 to 75, but we wouldn't have one. And that's where we have to watch out on those decibels and where we actually place those generators because that does have an effect. There's also the, the types of buildings that are around it that have effect on the, on the noise. We do have sound engineers that come with these to, to make sure that. We do have sound engineers that come with these to to make sure that, you know, we're able to work with the community on this.
Yeah, well, ninety ninety six is is pretty high. Any case, any other, let me go back.
I'd say too that, you know, I'm certainly open. We have a fantastic relationship with Bill Guerin and Public Works and Paul and others. So, you know. Looking ahead, not this year, but maybe in the future, open to the potential of discussing possible alternative locations.
Okay, I don't see any other comments. And that being the case, thank you so much for your presentation. I think we found it helpful. I know I did. And keep us abreast because it's something that on the community's mind. So we appreciate Mark, particularly your involvement. You've been great with the outreach and so thanks for, thanks for doing so.
Thank you, and I will very shortly, probably tomorrow morning. Send city manager and Lindsay Lara the the links that I mentioned, your clerk. And I'm sure they'll be distributed or posted on a website or something, but I'll send as many links as we can share.
And I'm going to look at my next bill a little more carefully. So thanks for.
Yeah, find that block. All right, thank you, Mayor.
Any case, with that, we'll move on and thanks once again, Darren Mark, for joining us this evening. Thank you.
We do have some public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, of course.
So just.
Public comments.
Thank you. If you are calling in, go ahead and press star nine to virtually raise your hands. And then if you're watching on YouTube, go ahead. And start submitting your comments in a live chat now. We do have some. The first, their name was withheld. What about North Centerfell? Kaiser Hospital and Shopping Centers, residential areas in North Centerfell? Another comment from Pam Reeves. What about North Centerfell Group Homes and Assisted Living Facilities? What about North Centerfell? What page of the bill is the block number on? Another comments is the canal is densely populated. If there is a PSPS for several days, such as previous PSPS, generators would be needed at more than one location, Bahia Vista, Wellness Campus, Alboro. Another is coming in slowly. I want to make sure we have all of it before I start reading.
Lindsay, perhaps it'd be easier for them to address each of those individually. Would that be possible?
Yeah, that would be.
Okay, whatever works best for you, Mark. We can read all the questions or take them one at a time. What's your, what's your preference?
Mayor, we'll follow your lead. I think you would like us to take the questions individually, which is fine. I think, I think, and I don't mean to sound evasive on this, I think some of our answers will be. Not much different than what we've shared already. So in other words, what about North San Rafael? I think the question is, I mean, the question. Most likely, everyone is going to ask is. Won't PG&E or why won't PG&E provide power to everywhere? And we've covered that a little bit earlier in saying that we, we simply don't have the ability. At this time anyway, with this plan. And again, this is for this year. Things are changing. The company is always looking for ways to improve and work with our partners. The city, Public Works, Planning Department, but we wouldn't have the space necessary to power. This entire. Footprint, for lack of a better word, of San Rafael. So what Darren was saying earlier. Is that, you know, we will identify critical infrastructure areas. And then probably helpful to point out is that, not to turn this back on, but so we have the circuits that come out. From the, from the substation and those circuits. If I can bring them back up again, I apologize. I turned this off thinking we were almost done, but that's okay. Let me just go with the overhead areas. So these lines that come out from the substation and again, just using the canal area as an example. This is on a circuit. And so, you know, we could probably, we could power this area. We could go across the way and this is a different circuit. So there's different circuits that we can power. I don't know if Darren is still on and has more to comment on, but at the end of the day. We're not going to have enough generators to power all the, all the areas. And we're going to be looking for critical infrastructure that doesn't already have generation. And so our customer outreach contacts will be working. With County Office of Emergency Services. We already, we already know some of our critical and essential customers will be reaching out to them to making sure that their generator has fuel. In advance, that it's working properly, that they're prepared, whether that's hospitals or senior care facilities. Or the the Public Safety Center, City Hall, et cetera. And we're going down that list. And then we're going to try and identify as we map out, we start four days out, we see a wind event coming. We start to narrow down where do we have these critical needs and on what circuit are they? And then how much of that circuit can we power from the substation with the generators that we're able to deploy? So not to sound evasive, it's hard to tell based on the wind event and where it's going to hit. What critical customers are in play, who needs generation the most and what's our top priorities? It's difficult to say, well, you in this particular area are absolutely going to get power. It's why we tell people they need to have a plan to be without power for a couple of days should that happen.
And let me just quickly interject. Please don't take this in criticism. We appreciate your, your input and completeness of your answers. However, looking at the agenda, we've got a lot on tonight's, tonight's agenda. So if we can cut this as concise as possible, we'd appreciate it.
All right.
Next question, Lindsay, your next, next point.
So I think the only one that may have not been answered, I think there was a few that are a little bit repetitive, but there was the bill, which, which page is.
On how it's delivered to you, but it should be the front of the bill in the upper left hand corner.
Okay. And the last final question is, is PG&E advising residents on battery storage for power self sufficiency versus fossil fuel? Quiet and non polluting?
Yeah, I'm not sure I understand the question.
Question. If somebody decides they want to purchase batteries. Whatever application they have in their home, I, I don't have that information. We do have information about batteries at pgne.com. If people would like to look into that. And you can also contact pgne.com to talk about energy efficiency programs, which includes batteries and and. Other things with your home to help you save money as well as, you know, work more efficiently.
And Lindsay, I'll send a number of links to that talk about battery storage, preparing for for a power outage for a couple of days. I mean, we have many, many, a library of links with tons of helpful information that I think all folks in San Rafael, Emmeran County can use.
Thank you. That would be helpful. We did get one more comment and that is that someone was not able to find that on their bill. So if you could include that on the links that you sent to us, so we can make sure.
We'll be experts on block fifty. Okay, with that, we thank you again and. And continue the good work in this area. It's important to our community. So we really appreciate. What you've done thus far and what we'll continue to do, I'm sure to help us in this.
Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Move on now to. Other agenda items, that is six A, General Plan twenty forty, Downtown Precise Plan. And Paul, you need no introduction, so I won't even involve Jim in this one.
Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Phillips and City Council members. The Community Development Department is happy to announce the release of our draft General Plan twenty forty. We were actually due to provide the city council with a progress report on the general plan. But with the readiness of this document being available and and posted. It's, this provides us an opportunity to give you an introduction to the draft general plan. And before I turn it over to Barry Miller, our project manager, to provide a summary report. I just want to make a couple of acknowledgements here. First of all, a bigger than life. Thank you to the twenty three person steering committee that was formed to assist us in this effort. And that includes Councilmember Bushy and Vice Mayor Colin. Which, they're no strangers to the general plan and past updates from our last general plan. So they were a big help. But there were many, many meetings and many, many hours, a lot of input, a lot of wordsmithing and assistance from the committee members. In fact, there were some terrific ideas that came out of the steering committee process, including. Guiding principles, which we've embedded in the draft general plan. So I want to thank the steering committee for all that work. And then we also would like to thank some of the community members from the neighborhood associations that provided input on our neighborhoods element. Which we were very surprised to see such great reception and in that input. So at this point, Barry, do you want to take it from here?
Yes, I'm just going to share my screen and go through a PowerPoint. Great. And we were having some issues with the PowerPoint sticking a little bit before, so bear with me. This is technically our fifth progress report to the city council, but I was doing a quick look over past meetings. And it's actually our eleventh presentation to the council on the, on the general plan update. We've come to you for everything from a level of service to appointing steering committee members. And finally are here to talk about the general plan. And I am not able to advance my slides, so I may need some assistance.
Barry, let's just give it one more second and see if it'll process. And if not, I'll pop in. All right. If you want to go ahead and stop share, I'll go ahead and take over and then you'll.
Sorry about that.
No, you're fine. Let's see if I have any luck. All right.
Great, thank you. Sorry about the technical delay and I'll just give a cue for next slide when we get to that point. So the project started about three years ago in late twenty seventeen when we came to the council with a work program and the request to appoint the steering committee. That was in December twenty seventeen. Here we are almost three years later. We spent most of twenty eighteen gathering our existing conditions information and developing guiding principles with our steering committee. Twenty nineteen was really about developing the policies in the plan and beginning the process of the Downtown Precise Plan. Which we'll talk about in this presentation. And twenty twenty was actually preparing the narrative and maps in the plan, vetting the plan and beginning and completing the EIR. For the general plan. And we are now in the beginning the plan adoption stage. We have a planning mission meeting coming up and we'll talk about that in a few slides. Next slide, please. So we had to think fast when we were, when, when the pandemic began, we have a pretty robust community engagement. Process and we shifted pretty quickly to Zoom for our steering committee meetings. We had eight subcommittee meetings of the steering committee as well, using Zoom. Continue to make presentations to commissions and various stakeholder groups. Over the spring, summer and early fall, using mostly on the Zoom platform. We continued to maintain our web presence and our interactive website through Neighborland. And released the results of our Spanish language outreach program during the, during this time period. Next slide, please. So obviously, a presentation about a very large and complex document could take a while. So we're just going to highlight some of the. What's new and different about General Plan twenty forty with regard to General Plan twenty twenty. And I want to emphasize here that we didn't start from scratch, that this is really a building on the good work that's been done. That's guided the city's growth through General Plan twenty twenty, carrying a lot of that content forward and making some strategic edits. To reflect challenges and opportunities for the future. Next slide. So we have a overview here of the growth forecasts in General Plan twenty forty. We're looking at roughly a fifteen percent increase in households over the next twenty years. And about a nine percent increase in jobs over the next twenty years. These are the general metrics that we're using for our long range planning. Interestingly, this is about the same increment of growth that was assumed in General Plan two thousand. The actual growth in the city as far as households was quite a bit less, but there was significant job growth. Until eight months ago or so. But the, the forecasts are not that different from prior forecasts based on that twenty year trajectory. Next slide, please. So there, one of the major changes between General Plan twenty twenty and twenty forty is this major shift in focus toward climate change. And and equity. And I do want to say, General Plan twenty twenty was pretty forward thinking on these two topic areas. But the, the world has changed in that sixteen year period since the last plan was adopted and we've had to change the plan in response. With regard to climate change, there are really two ways that we're addressing climate change. One is to reduce greenhouse gas emissions primarily through our land use and mobility policies. And this really aligns the general plan with the Climate Change Action Plan. With this goal of how do we live our lives and grow our city in a way that reduces our carbon footprint? And reduces our collective GHG emissions. The other is responding to the impacts of climate change and that's really more about adaptation. So you'll see a safety element that's much more focused on things like sea level rise and wildfire than we've seen in years past. With respect to the equity focus, this is both an issue of great importance, but also a state law that didn't, that we didn't have when the. Two thousand and twenty plan was prepared. There is a state requirement now to address environmental justice in the general plan. We've interpreted that more broadly to look at it issues of equity and inclusion in the community. And focus our policies on things like income inequality and. The and inclusive governance. So there, I'll talk a little bit more about this on another slide, but this is a big change from prior plans. Next slide, please. Just a quick overview of new and reorganized content in the plan. Sustainability, which was its own element, is now a cross cutting theme. So there's not a sustainability element, but there are. Sustainability policies throughout the general plan. And we've incorporated a lot of that direction, both from the former sustainability element and the Climate Action Plan into the general plan. Air and water quality have been incorporated into the conservation element. Our safety element addresses resilience as well. Community facilities are part of the infrastructure element now. And we have expanded the focus of the community design element to look more closely at historic preservation. What used to be called the governance element is now part of the equity, diversity and inclusion element. So again, emphasizing we're not losing content from the previous plan, but there is some strategic reorganization of content. So that we make sure that we're not, we don't have any redundancy and that the plan holds together cohesively. Next slide, please. So the map changes are something the council actually already discussed earlier this year in February twenty twenty. We came to you with a preview of the general plan map and also a summary of some of the changes that we were looking at at that time. There's very little that's changing on the land use map, other than some category combinations and these. We had twenty eight categories on the prior general plan map, which is a lot. That's much higher than you would ordinarily see. In a city of San Rafael size, so we have nineteen categories on the revised map. And there's been some consolidation, but that doesn't change the zoning. Zoning continues to be more specific and more prescriptive. So we're not really losing anything. We are ending up with a more workable map. Again, minimal changes, sites like the San Rafael Rock Quarry are not changing in this general plan. It continues to be designated for mineral resources. And. We will, we will come back to that later. So next slide, please. One of the things about General Plan twenty forty is that we were able to incorporate a lot of the broad policy direction provided by some of the plans that have been adopted over the last fifteen years. Things like the station area plan, the bike and pet master plan, which was updated in twenty eighteen and the local hazard mitigation plan. So a lot of the, the plans themselves are not, not part of the general plan, but the key policy recommendations. The key recommendations of each of these is expressed in the general plan through kind of higher level policies and some key action programs. Next slide, please. Here are the guiding principles. Paul mentioned these. There are five major principles that are guiding the plan toward, guiding the city. Toward this vision of being a thriving city by the year twenty forty. And importantly, in addition to these big themes, there is also the foundation that we're building on. Which is the successes of our previous planning work, things like open space preservation, great neighborhoods or revitalized downtown and so on. So this appears in the general plan document in what we're calling the framework chapter, which really kind of lays the ground for the the general plan. It provides the. It provides the context for some of what's driving change in the city and some of the the issues that we're responding to through the general plan. Next slide, please. So I'm going to just go quickly through a couple of the elements. We opted not to have a slide for each element because we'd be here a lot longer, but I want to just point out a few changes. In the land use element, the the primary takeaway here is that the growth of the city is really being focused in a few key areas, primarily to reduce greenhouse gas emissions and align the land use element with best practices in planning and growth. So most of the growth of the city, that 4,400 households that you saw on an earlier slide, is directed to downtown San Rafael about 50% and then smaller percentages to North San Rafael Town Center, which would be the North Gate area and the Southeast San Rafael Priority Development area that was recently designated. We're not looking at greenfield conversion to development in this general plan update. There is a strong focus on reducing some of the barriers to housing production. A lot of interest and emphasis in sustaining our neighborhood centers, primarily our neighborhood shopping centers, but also recognizing that retail is changing and we need to adapt. And so there are policies and programs to allow our neighborhood centers to adapt to economic forces and introduce things like housing, community uses and so on in our neighborhood centers. And a strong policy emphasis on retaining industrial land, recognizing that that's important from a jobs perspective, a revenue perspective, and even an environmental perspective. Because if that if that land is not available in San Rafael, people are going to drive a lot more to other communities for those services that are available here. In the mobility element, we've talked with you a lot in the past couple of years about the shift to vehicle miles traveled as the metric for the California Environmental Quality Act. So we're using VMT now in our SEQA documents. But we are also retaining level of service as a way of evaluating our transportation system and evaluating the impacts of development on that system. So that is embedded in the mobility element. There's also a stronger emphasis on being more multimodal. In other words, thinking about streets as being places not just for cars, but also for pedestrians and for bicycles and for transit vehicles, excuse me, vehicles. And then planning for the impacts of technology, things like driverless cars and policies that deal with those last mile trips from our transit centers to destinations around the city. Next slide, please. I did include a slide dedicated just to the neighborhoods element because I think it's this is actually a really important part of the plan. We didn't really talk about this element much with our steering committee, but what we did do is we engaged the neighborhood organizations, associations, HOAs, et cetera, directly in helping us update the neighborhood element text from the prior general plan, both through meetings and through surveys where folks could could tell us what they thought were the priorities in each community. We've updated the content. We've mostly maintained neighborhood boundaries, but made some organizational changes to this element. I think it's it's a very strong part of the plan in terms of bringing it down to the to the grassroots level and taking these kind of abstract city concepts and making them real by making them relate to places and spaces that are in the city. So this element's been completely updated. Next slide, please. In the equity, diversity and inclusion element of the plan, there are six primary goals. The authentic and inclusive participation goal. This is really a carryover from the governance element of the previous general plan. There are a lot of policies in the existing plan about engaging the entire community in governance and doing more outreach. And that's carried over. Healthy communities and environmental justice meets the state requirements, but it's also about how can we improve access to open space? How can we provide food security, opportunities for urban agriculture and address issues like proximity to to toxic and pollution sources and so on in that element? Housing security instability is a major theme of the entire plan, but it's particularly relevant as an equity issue and we've highlighted that in this element. Equitable service delivery really looks at making equity a factor in how the city does its budgeting and capital improvement programming. This is already something that the city is doing, but it's not really enshrined in the general plan. So we do have policies in the plan that make that commitment really clear. And then access to education and opportunity really looks at the pathways between between learning and school and job opportunities and future prosperity. So there's a set of policies on that. Age friendly community, I think, is a recognition of the fact that the population of older adults is the fastest growing segment of the community and will be over the next 20 years. And how do we provide those services and adapt the city to meet the needs of an aging population? So that's covered in that section. Next slide, please. Okay, now we're going to just do a couple of highlights of some of the the other elements. In the conservation and climate change element, we're carrying forward most of the policy direction on things like wetlands, creeks, hillsides, special status species. We've added new policies on urban forestry, street trees, light pollution, green infrastructure, renewable energy and other topics that have become more critical to addressing climate change. Safety and resilience, there is a as you'll hear from Paul in the next presentation, there's a much greater focus on sea level rise as a hazard to be addressed through our policies and actions. And wildfire, a lot of the recommendations of the wildfire action plan are included here. Parks, rec and open space, I would say there's first of all, there's a strong recommendation to do a parks master plan. It's something that hasn't been done that's that's needed. This element introduces a park classification system. By the way, this combines what used to be two elements, the parks and recreation element and the open space element. Under open space, I think that the biggest change is a shift from acquisition policies to maintenance policies. So we are at a point now where we have there. There's a large asset of open space in the city. So where it's less about acquiring more open space and more about how do we manage the open space we already have for things like fire prevention, vegetation management and so on. So there's there are a set of policies on that. Community design and preservation. We've reorganized this chapter. I think there's a greater focus on historic preservation in this chapter. It's one of the major goals and that that is a clear priority in this chapter. Next slide, please. Okay, and our last four general plan elements, the noise element, community services and infrastructure, which deals with schools, libraries, park, sorry, not parks, fire, police, as well as all of our utilities, water, sewer, storm drainage and so on. Economic vitality, which looks at both business development and workforce development. And arts and culture, which looks at how we can use the arts to connect to each other and also as an economic driver in the city. I want to just before we conclude this part, mention that the housing element is not being updated as part of the general plan update. That is updated on a schedule that is set by the state of California and that will begin next year. New housing elements are due by January 2023. So we will finish the general plan update and move to the housing element update next. Next slide, please. So key implementation actions, just some highlights here, which are high priority implementation actions include PDA plans. We don't know yet whether these will be precise plans or specific plans, but they'll cover the two newly designated priority development areas at North Gate and in Southeast San Rafael. An update to the canal community based transportation plan, which by the way, has already been funded by TAM. Shoreline adaptation and resiliency planning, which Paul will address. I mentioned the housing element and the parks and open space master plan. Next slide, please. So just a couple of comments on the downtown precise plan. We will be back with more information on the downtown plan at a future progress report and meeting. But this is a a more focused plan that just deals with downtown San Rafael. It updates the 1993 hour vision plan and it was funded by a grant that the city received from the Association of Area Governments, recognizing the opportunities in downtown, but also the need for some focused policy and regulatory direction to stimulate development in this area. One of the important things to note here is that the existing zoning for downtown San Rafael will be replaced with a form based code at the end of this process. And you'll see on the next slide a little more about that. Actually, we've got two more slides on the downtown plan. Let's go to the next one. This is the content of the downtown precise plan and you'll see here we are anticipating releasing this plan November 13th, 2020. There is a design vision in this plan with some direction for the area as a whole and also for geographic districts within downtown. There is a great focus on historic resources, transportation and parking. Big emphasis on incentivizing affordable affordable housing, but also looking at making sure that our affordable housing and economic development plans don't result in displacement. So there are anti displacement strategies in the form based code. Next slide, please. So here's where we're at with the precise plan. We received a working draft of the document from our consultants at the end of April, did a very comprehensive staff review of that draft and presented it to the steering committee and decided that we needed some more focused attention on this working draft from the steering committee. So there was a subcommittee of the the general plan 2040 steering committee created and they convened throughout July and August to go chapter by chapter through the downtown precise plan to provide some more specific comments. And I think the a lot of the focus of that effort was looking at the form based code. It's different. It's when you when you first see it, you'll you may think, wow, this is this does not look like any zoning ordinance I've seen before. And and it is a different way of thinking about how we regulate land use. So we really wanted to kind of test it on members of the steering committee. I think that was a very productive and beneficial process. And what we're doing now is making final revisions to the downtown plan and the code to address some of the concerns that were expressed and make it a tighter and more effective document. One of the issues has been building heights and density bonuses. That was, you know, a big area of a focus, particularly with new state legislation that may supersede what we can do downtown, you know, automatic height bonuses and so on. And so there was a lot of focus on making sure everything worked and that we weren't going to come up with these kind of conflicts between city regulations and state mandates. Next slide, please. Just again, as a reminder, there's an EIR that is included in this work program. It is close to being finished. We're also looking at a November 13th release date for the EIR. That looks at both the precise plan and the general plan. And it looks at at for each topic area addressed by the EIR. And there are about 18 different topic areas, geology, hydrology, biology and so on. Each section looks first at the impacts on the impacts of the general plan and then also on the impacts of the precise plan with mitigation measures identified and identifying which impacts may be significant and unavoidable. So you'll be hearing more about the EIR. And I do have a slide coming up about the comment process for that as well. Next slide, please. One other concurrent activity that's happening as we're completing general plan 2040, we're also updating the city's traffic impact fee. This is tied to the general plan because there is a list of projects, capital projects in the general plan that will be required to meet future growth needs. So there is a project, a list of transportation improvement projects that's been updated and cost estimates that are being updated. We're looking at funding sources and then the potential amount of the impact fee, which has which is is already an established fee, but we will be coming back to the city council probably next winter, this coming winter, early spring with some proposals for updating that fee. As part of that, we're also looking at best practices and fees in other cities to make sure that we're in line with what what other cities are charging and how they're handling their fees. Also, traffic impact study guidelines. As the council knows, we've come to you before with the the VMT process and I think we received pretty strong direction that this needs to be carefully thought out and carefully explained, both for the public and for the development community. So we are working on guidelines for how to do VMT and LOS analysis as well as what we're calling local access assessments in certain parts of the city. We won't go into detail on this now, but this is something we will be coming back to you within the next few months to talk more about as part of our continuing discussion. Next slide, please. Okay, so we're finally up to the timeline. This goes out to the next six months, looking at the release of general plan 2040. And I should say there are still a couple of chapters at the end of the general plan that have not yet been posted. Working on getting those up in the next couple of days. We have a hearing with the planning commission on the first nine chapters of general plan 2040 next Tuesday. And then another hearing with the planning commission on chapters 10 through 14 on November 12. We will be releasing the EIR after that planning commission hearing and the precise plan also. This is roughly November 14th that we're looking at, November 13th or 14th for that release. Once the EIR is released, that begins a 60 day comment period. So that would be mid-January when the EIR comment period closes. We will be continuing to have public hearings with the planning commission on the general plan and the precise plan through December and January prior to the close of the EIR comment period. Once the EIR comment period is closed, then we would be preparing responses to comments and putting together the final EIR and an addendum to the general plan and the precise plan, which lays out any changes that are made or that are recommended in response to public hearings. And then looking at a recommendation from the planning commission to the city council in March 2021. So at this point, we're still at least five months away from the from the time where the planning commission will make a recommendation to the city council. Once the city council gets the general plan, you will have an opportunity for additional public hearings and additional changes to the plan. I've put a couple of stars, the red stars on the timeline because we can come back to the council as the hearing process goes on to let you know what are the key issues that are being raised by the public. And in the event council guidance is needed on those issues, we'll have an opportunity to 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 consult with you on that. Next slide, please. This is for the benefit of those who may be watching this from home. If you would like to review the general plan, you can visit www.sanrefel2040.org. There is a link to the document, a direct link where you can download the whole thing or you can download individual chapters. And I've put my email on the slide, barry.miller@cityofsanrefel.org. Phone number is also listed. If you're interested in speaking on the general plan, please attend the upcoming commission meetings or future council meetings. We have I put the January 13th, 2021 date on here. That's our tentative date for close of comments on the EIR. But the comment period on the general plan is really open until the plan is adopted. We, of course, encourage early comments, the sooner the better for comments on the on the plan documents so that we can respond to issues early and adequately. But the reality of this process is that the the document is a draft and will remain a draft until the council takes action on a resolution adopting it. And that, I think, with the next slide concludes this progress report and I'm happy to answer questions and hear from you. Thank you.
Well, Barry, a very complete report. We thank you for that. Obviously, many in our community have been involved in this. And of course, we appreciate Paul and his his staff working with you on it. It's almost overwhelming, but it's all critical for the future development of our our community. Questions or comments from council members, then we'll open it to the public. And I don't see Andrew. Let's see. Yes, Kate Collins.
Yeah, I don't have a question more common and thank you for all that. It is a lot of information. And I did want to highlight, I did check out the YouTube video on. a lot of information. And I did want to highlight, I did check out the YouTube video on form-based codes because that is something that's very, very different that we are bringing to our community. And they were really helpful. So I just wanted to give a shout out to that. It was it was a good way to get a sense of why we're looking at that and why we're considering it. So just wanted to emphasize that a little bit more. Thanks, Barry.
Yeah, sure. Thanks. Thanks for doing so. Any other council members? Does not appear. So why don't we go to public for public comment?
Thank you. If you're participating by telephone, please press star nine now if you'd like to speak. And if you're watching on YouTube and you wish to provide comments, start submitting your comments in the live chat. And note that when submitting comments, you will need to write public comment prior to your message so that we know that you want it to be read aloud. We do have some. Okay, our first comment is from Meg Riley. Please add Centerfall Arts Council, develop a citywide Centerfall Arts Council to lead implementation of the arts and cultural element and oversee the arts and cultural master plan and vision. The policy to promote Centerfall as the county hub of arts and culture is excellent. Missing, however, is identification of an arts and cultural leadership vehicle to ensure implementation of that vision. This is from Bill Carney. How will general plan encourage more housing downtown in a Northgate Center to support economic vitality, transit and walkable in a walkable community? Describe how transferable development rights could could help with historic preservation or displacement from sea level rise.
I'll just come in. I I think we'll consider the public comments as as hopefully helpful suggestions for input and ask Barry perhaps to to comment at the end if he has any observations he'd like to share with us.
And I have another. This is lifelong resident Chris Hart here. Having witnessed a large number of general plans in America, the residents of Centerfell should be very proud of our 2040 general plan. It's going to be awesome for us all. I say this as the public observer with the best attendance record and a happy face emoji. This bold general plan provides the clarity and confidence that one needs to invest in the implementation of this general plan. And I'm going to give a couple more seconds, but it looks like it will conclude public comments. I see no more public comments.
And thank you for the comments, public. And Barry, I don't know if you want to comment on those points or not.
I'd be happy to. Yes, I think primarily to Bill Carney's comment on the how will the general plan encourage development in these areas? I think particularly with respect to downtown, one of the constraints and Paul can add to his thoughts on this as well. But one of the constraints that we identified were fairly low density limits in the existing general plan to downtown development. We're actually removing the the density limits from downtown and really focusing more on height limits as the limiting factor for the 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 volume of the size of a building. And that will create more flexibility, more opportunities for smaller units. I think just it takes away one of the obstacles that has been faced before to housing production. With respect to transfer of development rights, I think this is an area where we need, you know, there there's already a precedent. It's already, I think, the policies have been in place for a while. But we haven't seen a lot of TDR activity and we're looking at ways this would be a way of transferring development rights from sites that may be in hazardous areas, areas that are vulnerable to flooding to upland areas. And there are ways of doing that and it's it's done throughout the country. Something that, you know, is in the general plan and is endorsed by the general plan, but it's going to require some more, I think, some more evaluation on how we can craft an ordinance that really works. One of the the tricky parts is you need, if you're transferring the development rights away from a property, you need a receiving site where you're transferring them to. So it's identifying where those sites are. They're, you know, that's a that's a process that requires some some effort and it's an it is an implementation action in the general plan to do that. I with Meg, Meg Riley's comment, I just I just will acknowledge Meg and I have been in communication and I I should thank the Centerfell Arts Community. We had a stakeholder working group with them. They gave us some of the best feedback and really great ideas about how we could create a stronger arts and cultural community, sorry, a stronger arts and culture element in the general plan. And I think we've incorporated a lot of those suggestions. Her point is well taken about the need for an arts council. I think our hesitation is that at this point in time with the budget constraints, adding another city commission or board was maybe something we would think about longer term, but not necessarily right away. So that that was our, I think, our hesitance in putting that in the in the current draft. Thanks.
Thank you, Barry, for your comments. And Paul, do you have anything you wish to add or are we at the?
No, I think we're fine. Barry covered it all. I was going to mention historic resources for downtown. That's always been a challenge to take a look at historic resources. And we, as part of the downtown plan, of course, we're updating our historic resource inventory so that we I so we can see what is historic and what is not, which will also help in determining and helping the land development for housing. So other than that, I have nothing else to add.
And thanks. Thanks, Paul. Thanks for your part. In which case, I think we're at the point of acceptance of the report if somebody is willing to offer a motion.
I would be delighted to. Thanks to our great staff and the tireless work of our steering committee. And special thanks to our the leaders of the of the steering committee committee, Stephanie Plant and Omar Carrera. I move that we accept the report.
Thanks for that and thanks for being our rap along with Kate on that important committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Colin. Vice Mayor Panglin.
Wait, wait, you didn't come through.
I'm sorry.
Aye. My internet's walking out.
Yeah, you just cut out a little bit, but I did get your vote. Thank you. Councilmember Gimlin.
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough.
Aye.
Rukulups.
I matter carries five zero and thanks one, thanks again, gentlemen and for everybody involved. And now I'm going to ask for for Jim to give me a rough idea how long he might think that sea level rise adaptation might take. Trying to decide if she go to a brief break.
Paul, do you have PowerPoint on this as well? I think it's going to be shorter than the general plan item.
Okay.
Paul, you're on mute. Can you give us a time estimate?
I would expect that this presentation is about 10 to 15 minutes.
Okay.
It's certainly not as long as Barry's. Yeah, okay.
All right. Well, let's let's power through. In which case sea level, next item, sea level rise adaptation. Who wishes to introduce this issue or this matter?
Okay, I'm going to start. A good evening again. Tonight, we're presenting an informational report on sea level rise. And we purposely timed this to follow the general plan because the general plan is a springboard on the next steps for this particular topic. And I would like to acknowledge that the informational report tonight was a joint effort by both Public Works and the Community Development Department. And so you're going to hear not only from me, but from Matt Brennan. Matt is with ESA, their environmental consultants that have been hired by the city, the Public Works Department on one of the two studies that we're going to quickly go through. Barry, of course, indicated to you that we're updating our safety element. We have new policies and programs addressing sea level rise. And we purposely prepared two supportive documents for the general plan 2040 relative to this topic area that are specific to one program in the package of sea level rise policies and programs. And that is the need for us to move forward with preparing an adaptation plan to tackle this particular issue. The first report is a flood risk and sea level rise adaptation report that was prepared by city staff. And then the second is a sea level rise adaptation technical guidance study that was prepared by ESA. And I would like to note that both of these documents are not directives, but they're guidance. They're guidance moving forward because preparing an adaptation plan is going to involve a community-based process. So just a little history on flooding in San Rafael. As you know, we have a history of flooding. We have a great expanse of area of low-lying lands that are former baylands and marshlands that have been filled and developed over the years. And these areas are vulnerable to sea level rise. It is projected that sea level rise will will rise 45 to 55 inches by the year 2100. Although we've been tracking this topic area for a number of years, we actually embraced the topic in 2014 when we prepared a white paper which was first touched on identifying areas where we know are vulnerable to sea level rise, identifying some potential opportunity areas, and then also setting the stage to move forward with what we call a vulnerability assessment. And in 2017, actually, the county of Marin prepared Bay wave vulnerability assessments. So they did a lot of the heavy lifting for us. This is a very good, comprehensive document that provides an excellent inventory of our assets in our community. And the county actually involved all the cities and towns along the bayfront to put together Bay wave. And like I said, it's it's a an incredible document and it's our foundation moving forward. So hats off to Chris Chu at the county of Marin who was preparing this or prepared it. In 2019, we added some sea level rise programs to our climate change action plan. And then, of course, our general plan is including policies and programs. Just to give you an idea, the areas that are vulnerable to sea level rise, it's primarily the central San Rafael and southeast San Rafael area, including the canal neighborhood as well as Peacock Gap. And then we have some areas in the Galinas Basin in north San Rafael. Most of that's in the county. But we do have city properties and city areas within the city limits in north San Rafael that are vulnerable to sea level rise. So as I mentioned, we have a new programs and policies on sea level rise. There's actually seven new policies, 16 programs. They focus on awareness and disclosure, a framework for regulation and planning ahead for adaptation. We've included a sea level rise projection map, which we would commit to update every five years using Bay wave as our foundation, committing to assess sea level rise in new development and city capital projects, establishing a minimum construction elevation and sea level rise overlay, improving, expanding our shoreline levy system. And then lastly, a commitment to prepare and adopt the sea level rise adaptation plan. And Barry had identified this as one of the high priority programs in our general plan. And this is where the two supportive documents come into play to reinforce that plan. And what I'll do is I'll briefly go through the first, which was prepared by staff. Essentially, this is a a foundation for our for and a guidance for our preparing a a sea level rise adaptation plan. There's been a lot of resources that have surfaced since the white paper in 2014 and some with attention on San Rafael specifically, including the resilient by design competition. I don't know if you may recall that from several years ago. But the this particular report is really intended to provide guidance on what needs to be covered in an adaptation plan, the approach for preparation and suggestions that are suitable for the city. And in blue here are basically the key elements that have to be included in that plan, including measures and tools that are appropriate for San Rafael as well as funding measures and funding sources for implementation. That is a tough part because some of the adaptation, long-term adaptation measures are going to be very costly and involve multiple agencies. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Brennan to cover their technical guidance study. Matt, are you with us?
Yes, Paul, can you hear me?
I can. I think we can all hear you.
Great. Thank you. I apologize for not being there on video. My internet cut out twice in the earlier part of this meeting, so I decided to just do voice to be more reliable. I'm also lagging a bit on the presentation. Paul, are you showing the cover blue slide or on to the first?
Blue slide.
Okay, could you? All right. So now we're synced up. Could you go to the next slide, please?
I'm there.
Great, thanks. So as Paul introduced me, I'm Matt Brennan with Environmental Science Associates. I'm an engineering hydrologist. And I've assisted the city to develop this technical assessment assessment of the flood hazards that the city is facing to then inform guidance for how the city should proceed with developing adaptation measures. So I'll give a brief summary of this study tonight. The study considered all the city's shoreline. It's shown here in the sort of bright colorized areas of the map, not the areas that are grayed back. Those are county or other areas. A key factor of the city's flood hazard is the ground surface elevation, typically that in relative to bay water level. So that's the colorized areas that are overlaying on this map. And just for reference, the blue are the lowest. Those areas are generally exposed to mean sea level or lower. As you go from blue to green, you're starting to expose more to like high tides or some moderate storm surge. Green to yellow, you're starting to get to only the very largest events. So like up to what we call the 100-year event or 1% annual chance event. Yellow to orange is just above that level. So not an immediate threat now, but we'll face flood hazard with sea level rise. And then as you get to the dark red and then the hills that are just shown with the bare aerial, those are the areas not directly high enough to not directly be exposed to flooding and sea level rise. But even though those areas are above sea level rise, they often depend on infrastructure, which may be in the flood hazard areas. So it's really a citywide problem and for everyone to address. The study looked at six regions within the city that had similar geography and flood risk. Those are the the areas labeled with the white call-out areas. I'll get to talk about a few of them tonight. And then for each of these regions, even though I won't touch on them all, we developed a set of measures for the city to consider to help adapt to sea level rise. Next slide, Paul. So this shows an example of that one of the focus areas, the canal south region. This area is particularly vulnerable to sea level rise because it's located on former tidal marsh that have been diked up and those areas have subsided. So that the ground surface here is actually lower than today's high tides even. There are some, there are low levees along the south bank of the canal that block these high tides. But several low points along that levy, just to give you an idea, can experience overtopping during the highest tides of the year, sometimes known as king tides or during storm surge events. And so obviously, kind of it's with these low spots already at risk, this area is certainly going to be facing a considerably exacerbated risk with sea level rise. And so the study recommends a series of short and long-term measures for this area, which I'll get to in a few moments. Next slide, please, Paul. So this is a similar focus area for the canal north region on the north side. Here you can see the ground surface elevations are slightly higher about by a foot or two. So this area is not quite as exposed as to the south part of canal. However, only a foot or two of sea level rise will put the north part of the canal area to about where the south canal area is now. And also you can see that the north canal areas to the northwest propagates into the city's downtown. Certainly a place where it starts to affect even more city services and other key infrastructure. So again, this also warrants the long-term adaptation measures. I'll touch on a few of these here in instance, but before that, I just want to explain a little bit more about where the sea level guidance is coming from. So the next slide, please, Paul. So the next slide shows the state's sea level rise projections and guidance based off those for planning. The top table is the guidance that comes from the state's Ocean Protection Council. They gathered together the a group of national experts on sea level rise, develop the best available science for the likelihood of occurrence. And one thing, based on this sort of guidance here, this study decided to focus on sea level rise exposure up to about three feet. So to give you a timeframe for that, you can see out in the 2100 column and the likeliest percent occurrence, you're sort of about in the range of about three feet. So that's sort of the most likely set of sea level rise rates that's predicted would be about three feet. Or to be slightly more conservative, the bottom row of this top table shows the 0.5% chance of sea level rise being exceeded, which the state state calls the medium-high-risk aversion profile. This is about the 1 and 200 chance. Um, and in this instance, you can see three feet of sea level rise would come sooner, more at about twenty-seventy. Um, so in about fifty years. And, um, so three feet of sea level rise gives the city a planning horizon of something on the order of, you know, fifty to, um, about eighty years. Um, sea level rise will continue in the next century. The rate's a little bit uncertain, but, um, you know, this city's guidance of planning for three feet is consistent with the state guidance, which calls for implementing, uh, adaptation measures that protect for three and a half feet of sea level rise by twenty-fifty, so within thirty years. But bottom table gives a sense of the how risk changes the sea level rise. In the zero sea level rise column, you see there is what the current water levels are. So it ranges from, um, MHHW is mean higher high water. The high tide is about six feet to the, uh, hundred-year or one percent annual chance event is nine point five feet. And Paul, if you'll quick and show the next, the one-foot column now, you see things move up there. And so this gives you a sense of the way in which things shift. So with a foot of sea level rise, the higher water levels become more frequent. Today's one percent event will become the ten percent event in, with a foot of sea level rise. And today's ten percent event will become the ninety-nine percent or the one year, about the king tide event in the future. So Paul, now if you click again, show the rest of the table. And here are the amounts with additional amounts of sea level rise. Um, you can see it progressing, um, you'll see generally, one thing it gives you is with three feet of sea level rise, today's one hundred perc- one percent flood risk chance will be occurring at about the frequency of today's high tide. So that gives you a sense of the way in which risk is shifting. Um, five feet of sea level rise will definitely bring further exposure, but based on the state's guidance, there's probably fifty or more years to plan for those higher scenarios. Next slide, please, Paul. Um, so for the citywide measures, um, and the priority recommendations that came out of our study were three citywide measures that affect, um, large areas of the city. One was a canal feasibility study to really focus on, um, what to do as a long-term approach in the canal area. Particularly, two, um, main approaches in this type of setting would be something where you're talking about building higher levees along the existing canal boundary. Where the other option would be to build a closable tide gate structure, something like currently protects London or Venice, um, at the mouth of the canal. So the feasibility study would help compare those and choose a path forward with that. Uh, would also include developing those sea level rise overlay maps that Paul talked about as part of the general plan to bring in a zoning element to sea level rise planning. And finally, recognizing that particularly because so much of the city is low-lying and a lot of it is, uh, drained by pump stations, to develop a pump station assessment that really considers the design and the function of those pump stations under sea level rise and also other climate change effects. Um, see, climate change could also bring increased precipitation, more intense rainfall events, and also potentially bring groundwater to the surface. So a shoreline pump station assessment will help really identify how those key features, like the, uh, one shown in the figure on the right there, will behave with sea level rise. And next slide, please, Paul. And then for some shorter-term projects, um, that, uh, where we really looked at short-term being defined as both flooding that was sort of a present issue right now and in the short-term, not even with sea level rise, and also short-term in terms of, um, occurring on city-owned land where the city has, um, more wherewithal to take action. Um, one of those was to look at raising the shoreline in the canal south area, um, at the west end of Harbor Way. All these, um, abbreviations in parentheses, CS1, all are references to, um, measures in the report that you can find there. Um, on the north side of the canal, there's a number of areas where, um, stormwater culverts drain, um, to the bay with gravity, to the canal in the bay with gravity, but they, um, face potential backwatering and, and flow going back up the culverts and causing problems in low-lying areas of the streets. So those, we look to put tide gates or flaps on the end of those, such as the middle, um, picture. That could help reduce the infiltration there. And, um, finally, the last one is to really start looking at the combined stormwater and bay flooding um, along San Pedro Road in Locklomond and, um, particularly at, um, at the, um, the north end as well, you can see, I mean, sorry, the east end as well. You can see the picture on the right where already there's, um, some overtopping during large wind and wave events splashing away. So particularly since San Pedro Road is a key emergency access route that the county has identified, um, for a part, least part of the community, this would be an area as well to really start, um, bringing into better focus. Thanks, Paul.
Okay, great, thank you, Matt. I just wanna cover this particular slide and then we're done. Uh, I wanna mention recent related actions and reports, which are summarized in the staff report this evening, that are helping to move the dial on adaptation. One thing that we did do is obviously we were successful in getting a, a priority development area designation for the southeast San Rafael and the canal area. And this positions us to be eligible for grant funds for long-range planning of that area that can and will include resilience. Uh, there are several other grants that are being pursued, one by the Canal Alliance, uh, through PG&E. Uh, this is really for education and outreach and to get, get input from the canal community. Similarly, Prop sixty-eight, the Ocean Protection Council Grant that we are partnering with the county and applying for. And Corey Bidoff is available to answer any questions on that particular grant application. I wanna mention TAM has grants for sea level rise that are part of the transportation sales tax measure AA. Uh, and, uh, the, actually, the TAM board will be reviewing that, um, that, uh, revenue source at their meeting, I believe, in November. Uh, you remember the Triscornia Marsh Habitat Restoration Project? You will be seeing that coming forward in two thousand twenty-one. The city is a lead agency. Uh, there's a groundwater study underway that seems to be a forgotten topic when we deal with, uh, um, sea level rise. Uh, so that'll be an additional source of information. Then lastly, there is a Marin Grand Jury Report, uh, we will be presenting to the city council. Uh, there's a list of questions that we as San Rafael are required to respond to, uh, and I believe that's gonna be returning to the council in November. And just to close, uh, we're not looking for detailed comments tonight. Uh, like the general plan, uh, these documents are posted with the general plan and we en- we are encouraging public review and comment in tandem with the draft general plan twenty-fourty. Uh, what we are asking you to do tonight is to accept this report. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, thank you, Paul. And, uh, again, extremely well, well done, I would suggest. Let's go to comment first with anyone, somebody? Vice Mayor Collin.
Yep, I have a comment. Um, thank you, Paul, and I, hopefully you can hear me. I don't know, my internet says it's being unstable.
You're okay.
So sorry about that. But I just wanted to give a shout out on the staff adaptation report. That information is, um, really pulls everything together that the staff has done and it really provides great clarity looking ahead. I highly recommend reading it, but I know it will be a guiding, a document going forward. So I really just wanted to recognize all the staff work that went into that. Um, it really, it will be a key discussion, uh, document when we're out talking to the community and, and looking at this going forward. So, uh, so just a comment, uh, don't have any questions at this time. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Um, uh, anyone else? I'll just quickly, uh, comment, one, uh, one portion of the report that struck me was under the General Plan twenty-fourty wherein, you, I think it make it quite clear as to what we're trying to accomplish. And it says, while an update is primarily a refresh, in quotes, of the existing plan rather than a brand-new plan, changes to the document address the evolving state of the city and region cover issues such as climate change, social equity, emerging transportation technology. I, I think you're exactly right. And I think the approach is, uh, perfect. No re- no point recreating the wheel if we can, um, modify that that's been done. Excellent work in the past. And furthermore, recognizes some changes that, uh, we need to address. So I think you've included that in, in, or part of your report. And the report itself is, I think, very well done. Any other comments? Public comments?
If you are participating by telephone, please press star nine if you wish to provide comments. And we do have some YouTube comments, but if you'd like to add some, you're welcome to go ahead and submit those in the live chat and just write public comment in advance. Our first comment, actually, let me just get that one, looks like it's being added too. One is from Chris Hart. Getting the city involved in resilient by design was huge. Whoever made that decision is a winner. Good, bold decision. Now we know how to move forward.
I think that was the city council, wasn't it, Paul? I'm not sure, but I think.
Paul is laughing on mute, if no one could hear. Uh, from Bill Carney. Include one, redouble reduction of greenhouse gas and two, citywide public involvement as essential elements of San Rafael sea level rise adaptation planning process. And from Pam Reeves. Are you including the problem of ground level flooding from sea level rise? Christina Hall, professor at University of California, Berkeley. Problem of sea level rise creating groundwater even if levees are built and are built sea level rise. According to Dr. Kim and, uh, University of California, Berkeley, SLR may be far worse than expected due to the fact that computer models never looked beyond twenty-one-hundred. What about subsidence rates? You cannot plan for the short term. We need to provide for the foundation for our future. I'm gonna give it another moment just to allow any additional comments to come in.
I just mentioned groundwater, where groundwater was mentioned, uh, in the report. And it rec- it's fully rec- oh, well, it's recognized. I don't know, fully recognized, that'd be a judgment, but certainly recognized.
I see no more comments on YouTube and there's no one on the line with raised hands. That concludes public comment.
Thank you so much, closed public. And come back to Paul if you have a, a comment with regard to, uh, those observations.
Oh, no, nothing to add. We'll consider those comments, thank you.
And, and thanks for doing so. With that, is there a, a motion to accept the report?
I move we accept the report.
And?
Second.
And second, roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Collin?
Aye.
Councilmember Gamblin?
Aye.
Councilmember McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I am matter carries five zero. Thanks again, Paul. Well done, well done. We will therefore move to, uh, almost conclusion. Councilmember reports and requests for future agenda items, anything? Uh, Councilmember McCullough?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't.
Oh, that's okay. I just wanted to make sure I didn't overlook you. Councilmember Bushy?
No.
No, sorry.
Same issue.
I understand, I understand. I'll just have a couple of quick comments. Um, sort of order of personal privilege, uh, on the first two, which are, uh, Friedas Parkway. I did, uh, talk with our district attorney regarding the matter, wherein, uh, uh, it appears a weapon was pointed, uh, at a brief confrontation in Friedas Parkway, uh, as, uh, some, uh, some, um, comments were being made on our, our, our structure. Uh, nevertheless, the point being that, uh, uh, this person was actually from Nevada, for those that are interested, but, uh, it's not acceptable, in my view, to have anything such as this occur, particularly where there's a woman and a small child present. Uh, so I hope the DA takes appropriate action there. And also with regard to Father Sarah and that, that event, uh, we talked about that earlier. Uh, quite frankly, it bothers me that, uh, groups of individuals, again, the majority from out of San Rafael, uh, didn't take the, uh, I must, uh, what I think is the most appropriate step, which would have been to talk with the, the father, uh, Father Lou, Father, uh, uh, Jacob, uh, no. Well, the fathers at the church to express their concern, their reservation, their, their, uh, their issues and perhaps a, a better resolution, I think is most appropriate to damage personal property uh, within our city and particularly, uh, well, I'll say particularly within, uh, church surroundings. I think that's most inappropriate. So I was sorry to see that occur in San Rafael. Finally, uh, next, we're gonna do some pay- taping on state of the city. It's a little unusual. Normally, we have a nice, uh, nice event at oftentimes Peacock Gap, thanks to Councilmember McCullough and well-turned, uh, well, uh, attended. Uh, by four hundred and fifty or so this year, there is not such a thing, thanks, thanks to Coke. But I guess, uh, participate in that and I frankly, I'm not sure if anyone else is, but certainly, I'll be making a comment with regard to, to the city and some of the wonderful things that, uh, the community has, uh, produced. Uh, it's a wonderful place to, to live and, and thrive. So that's coming up as well. It's unfortunate, I always enjoy the meals. And, uh, of course, the standing rounding, rounding applause, but, uh, not, not so this time around. Councilmember McCullough, this will be your, that, that won't be attended by you or I. That was, uh, should have been, could have been, wish, wish it had been. So we're gonna miss that. In any case, uh, we'll move on from that to San Rafael successor agency consent calendar. Um, any comments from the public regarding the consent calendar under San Rafael successor agency?
If, let's see, we have no callers on the line. So if you're participating through YouTube and you want to provide comments on the successor agency consent calendar, go ahead and submit those in the live chat now. I'm gonna give it about ten seconds.
Okay.
Okay, I see no comments.
Okay, uh, is there then a motion to accept the report regarding the, um, investment, uh?
I move.
Let's record.
Second.
Moved and second, roll call, please.
Number Bushy?
Aye.
Vice Chair Collin?
Aye.
Number Gamblin?
Aye.
Number McCullough?
Aye.
Mayor Phillips?
I am matter carries five zero. Made it through the evening, thanks, everybody, good job.
Thanks, everyone.
Bye.
Everybody.
Bye.
Till next time.